All right. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Adams Brothers Podcast. Happy Valentine's Day to each and every last one of you out there in Facebook land. We want to thank you all for taking the time out of your busy schedule to tune into the Adams Brothers Podcast on a special holiday like today. Well, it's not a holiday, but it's a special day, Valentine's Day, so we'll try not to keep you all occupied very long. We are here this afternoon with a candidate for Broward County Commissioner, Commissioner, I should say. She's going to be running for Broward County Commission seat number five. And we'd like to welcome Ms. Kimberly Jean to the Adams Brothers Podcast. Good afternoon, Kimberly.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me.
You are very, very welcome. And like I said just earlier, Happy Valentine's Day to you and your family. And we're going to try not to keep you so long here so you can get out and enjoy your family. But we'd like to start out by saying, well, just asking you to introduce yourself. Tell us about you, where you grew up, your education, and just tell us about you.
Great. Well, thank you for having me. Happy Valentine's Day. So my name is Kimberly Jean. I live in Davie, Florida. I have three children. I have a seven-month-old. I have a five-year-old with special needs, and I have a 14-year-old daughter. And I was born and raised in California in the San Francisco Bay Area. I moved to Broward County just over two years ago. And I have worked for the town of Davie as a park ranger. And I currently work in the Office of Public Safety for the city of Deerfield Beach overseeing and managing their park ranger department. And you know, I get, I get asked a lot of questions of why am I running for office? And what I would really like to say is it's more about who I'm running for. And who I'm running for is to represent a community of people that are very underrepresented currently on the Broward County Commission. And there's a wide array of people that are underrepresented. So I want to represent middle-income and low-income families. I am a middle-to-low-income family member myself. I want to represent people under the age of 40, heck, people under the age of 50. There's no one on the commission that is a young person that actually understands what it's like to live in Broward County during this economic times, not already being established. I'm running for retail workers to support retail workers for minorities, for LGBTQIA families. And for people that are touched by disability, being a mother of an autistic son, you really learn how to advocate for people. And I want to advocate for people who don't have a voice and aren't represented on the Broward County Commission. And you know, something that I see a lot when I go and knock on doors and what I hear a lot is people are hungry for new leaders. They are hungry for new representation. They are hungry for people that are passionate about not government, but about making change happen and about being a voice for people that really want to see stuff happen, that are also excited about local politics and engaging and able to engage the community. And so that's just a little bit about me and why I'm running, and it's more about who for me.
Right. Now, I don't know, I had my headphones on and maybe I missed this part. But could you tell, tell the viewers again, what part of District Five does that cover?
Absolutely. So District Five is Davie, Cooper City, Southwest Ranches, a little bit of Plantation, and a touch of Sunrise.
Okay. All right. And again, today is Valentine's Day, and we all know that six years ago, tragedy hit us here in Broward County out at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School, where a sick individual took an assault rifle and took innocent students and lives of teachers and students out at MSG. And if any of those MSG parents are watching, we send our heartfelt condolences to you all. And we're sending our prayers to you all to help you get through this day that happened, that changed your lives forever six years ago. So my question, knowing that, you know, what happened six years ago, if you are elected to the Broward County Commission, would you be in favor of more money, more money for schools, school security to provide, make sure that our kids are safe in school and they don't have to worry about some crazy person coming in and shooting up a school? Give us your thoughts on that.
Yeah, absolutely. So when I am elected, I will definitely advocate for more funding towards mental health for our young people and more funding for law enforcement to be able to do the hard work that they need to do in keeping us all safe. You know, one of the catalysts that also really got me to run for office was my daughter, who goes to school at Western High School, called me and said, there's, there's a kid with a gun in my school. We're huddled in the corner. I love you and goodbye. And I mean, that's the scariest thing that any parent hears. And she truly thought that someone was going to come in and that was going to be the last time she spoke to me. And I called the school and, you know, the parents were just, it was such a scary moment for everybody. And the police came, they handled it. There was a child with a gun. They ended up handling it. It was a quasi-false alarm. But, you know, knowing that this is not the first time and it won't be the last time that parents receive these phone calls. And the fact that this continues to happen and our gun laws aren't keeping up with this increase of child shootings. I mean, it's, it's, I graduated high school in 2003 and I never even had to think about kids and mass shootings and guns. And so there's really a lot that needs to happen. And I think focusing on mental health and making sure that Broward County Sheriff's Office has the funding they need and our local police municipalities have all of the funding they need to be able to handle whatever arises is essential.
Right. Do you think that we need more resource officers in all of the schools? And if so, would you be in favor of providing more funding for resource officers?
Yeah, I think every school needs a resource officer, absolutely. And I think what is really important, right, is that police and sheriff and all over the country are having a hard time finding people that want to be police officers. And so we need, yes, resource officers, absolutely. And we need funding for our law enforcement. But what we also need from the top down is an embracing of our law enforcement so that people want to be police officers, so that people like my daughter, who's 14 years old, she wants to be a police officer. But so her peers also want to be police officers. And so that it seems like a, you know, not just an exciting job, right? But you know, you're making a difference in your community and you know that your leaders support you. And, you know, I think that there's a very unnatural and unfortunate assumption that goes, if you're a Democrat, you're defunding the police, and if you're a Republican, you want to fund the police. Well, I work with law enforcement every single day. I work with Broward County Sheriff's Office every single day. And they are some of the bravest, most intelligent people that I met. And they're having a hard time affording to live here in Broward County. I mean, we have Broward County sheriffs, people and police officers moving out of our county and commuting in because they can't afford to live here. And so what I think needs to happen is not only do we need to make sure that we have school resource officers in our schools, but we also need to start having more outreach to our high schoolers about what a career in policing looks like and start letting them know that it is a very viable career that has longevity and pension, and they help pay for your education. And there's a lot of really great benefits to being a police officer today.
Yes, it is. It is a good job to be, and my son is a police officer as well. So I do know that they have very good benefits. And what about armed security officers? Do, do you think that they should also have like armed security officers that works along with the school resource officers on campus as well?
Well, they do have the guardian program.
I think school resource officers are paid and trained police officers that have the training to deal with emergent situations, who know how to de-escalate is really the way that we should be going as far as keeping our schools safe.
Right. And the reason I asked, asked that question was I know they had this thing, what was it, the guardian program?
They have the guardian program in place now throughout Broward County where the security is, is trained by the Broward Sheriff's Office. Actually, they have to go through, I believe, so many hours of coursework to be a guardian program, to be a participant in the guardian program, if my memory serves me right.
Right.
Yeah. Hey, listen, there's benefits to having a guardian in schools in partnership. But I don't want that to be taken away from the fact that we do need trained police officers to support our kids and take care of our kids.
Okay. And what would you say to the people that will say that, that would cost too much money? And I know some people say you can't put a price on safety and public safety. But what would you say to those people that will say that, that will put a strain on their already tightened pocketbooks now?
I would agree that you can't put a price on safety. And if you speak to any of the parents that have received a phone call of, there is a person with a gun at my school and I'm hiding in a corner and goodbye and I love you, that they also would agree that there is no price to the safety of our children and young people.
Okay. And Kimberly, what is your vision for Broward County? And if, and what changes would you advocate for and why if you made further changes if elected?
Yeah. So I really think that Broward County, and I think a lot of the commissioners agree, Broward County needs to densify, which means we need to build up, we need to build housing, and we need to do it quickly. We can't wait for housing. I'm seeing and working with unhoused people in parks every single day. And I see unhoused people in my community every single day. And let me tell you, coming from San Francisco, I have seen what happens when you don't take action to curtail the issues that you see happening. And so I would like to see more funding for our unhoused community members. I would like to see more housing. I'd like to see more public transportation happening. And, you know, I think that that is the number one priority, right? But I think another policy issue that I really want to see happen is additional funding for animal control in Broward County. So currently, our budget is about $8 million for our animal control in Broward County. And it is really hard for animal control to respond in a timely manner if an animal is loose, if an animal is running around. It takes 72 hours for them to respond if there is a dog running in a street. 72 hours. That is a really long time. And you ask the operator, why is it going to take so long? And they said, we just don't have the budget. We don't have the funding. We don't have enough people. And as somebody that's a dog owner and a dog lover, let me tell you, 72 hours for someone to respond to your lost dog who's wandering the streets is a really long time. You know, the commission has said, or commissioners have said, that Broward County residents expect too much by bumping up that budget. But Miami-Dade's budget is, what, $30 million for their animal control? Palm Beach is almost $11 million. So our sister counties are doing more than what we're doing in Broward County. And I think that families really want to see our little furry family members taken care of. And it's also a safety matter, right? There's a dog running the street that gets hit by a car and causes a car accident. That's a public safety matter. If there's also a dog that bites a child, that's a public safety matter. So not only is it a matter of, you know, loving our animals and respecting animals and life, but it's also public safety.
Yes. So I just wanted to piggyback off a question you said earlier about actually the homeless. It's a law right now being crafted in the Florida Legislature, I believe, by Governor DeSantis and the legislature. And it's about homeless, and it wants the local governments to remove homeless people and lock them up if they're found on the streets in the municipalities. How would you feel about a law like that? What would be your position?
Yeah, you know, I've been, I've been following it and I've been speaking to law enforcement about it. I've been speaking to some of the other park ranger departments throughout Broward County about it. You know, park rangers and park ranger departments really deal very closely with the unhoused. And whether it be them living at home or living in vehicles or actually in tents on the street, you see the full spectrum of unhoused. And the reality is, it's a very sad situation. I don't think that there is an immediate answer to it. But I will say is, you know, let me backtrack. There was a woman in a park and she was pregnant, very pregnant. And I approached her and she told me she was pregnant. She was homeless. She had nowhere to go. And there was no resources available to her. All the shelters are full. She's been on a waitlist for months. She doesn't know what to do. She lost her ID. She lost her birth certificate. Can I help her? And unfortunately, there aren't enough resources right now to put people in beds, in shelters, to care for them. So I think until we really start talking about how we're going to rehabilitate and expand our shelter program, that immediately making being unhoused or homeless illegal is not the answer. But there has to be a fair, a mix that makes sense where if we have beds available and they're, they're refused, there definitely needs to be a bigger conversation about what that means exactly. Is that a drug issue? Is that an alcohol issue? Is it an issue of just not wanting to leave your items behind? You know, some people, their whole lives are in a shopping cart or in a bag and they can't bring it with them. And so you really have to approach the, the matter with a heart and with empathy and also understand that your community needs a safe space to recreate, needs safe streets, needs sanitary streets. So it's a tricky balance. And I think that there's a lot more work that needs to go into it before I can truly say if I would be against it or for it. But something needs to be done. Something truly needs to be done. And I think ultimately, the answer is housing, more housing.
Yes. Yes. And that's, you're right, because, I mean, if you're going to go lock the homeless up, I mean, you're going to have the jails overflowing again. And like you say, locking them up, just locking every homeless person up is going to cause outrage because you've got a lot of people that are sleeping. I was just looking at this study. It's more people homeless across the United States than any time before in America. And this law, when I saw that law by the legislature, I was like, this only just going to compound more problems here in the state of Florida and in the municipalities, especially here in Broward County, where you go down just here in Deerfield, Fort Lauderdale, Pompano, you see so many homeless people. And a lot of those people fell down on their luck. And I, I could never support anything that's going to lock up the homeless.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, you know, there's also the conversation of maybe not locking them up, but putting them in designated areas where they can camp, right? That's another part of this. And while I do understand the thought process of that, it will be a huge hit on the resources of municipalities to be able to manage these consolidated camps. Not only will your calls of service go up for your police, but your maintenance and just keeping the area sanitized and clean and free of disease and making sure that it's safe for the unhoused is also going to be a huge challenge on police, on the cities, and on the residents, frankly.
Right. Kimberly, one of our viewers, Samantha prayed up Neil. She says that the schools they plan on closing down use them as shelters. What do you think about that?
It's a good idea.
You know, it's not a bad idea. It's not a bad idea. But I will say this. So currently, Broward County schools are not full. They're not to capacity. And why is that? It's because families, young families cannot afford to live in Broward County. They are leaving to go to cheaper areas because it is so hard to raise children in Broward County. We are one of the most expensive places to live in the United States. So let me say this. I am hesitant to say turn these schools into housing because I believe that at some point, we are going to get a handle of this housing situation and we are going to need those schools. And once you let go of those schools, they're gone. And so you can't, there's nowhere else to technically build large schools. And so my big concern is if we shut down these schools and turn them into housing, we're going to lose schools that we're going to need in 10 or 20 or 30 years. But what I will say is I would definitely advocate for early childhood education centers or autism centers. So early childhood education and daycare, right? So we hear we're in a lot of crises, right? We're in a housing crisis. We're in a home insurance crisis. We're in a unhoused crisis. And we're in a childcare crisis. So I really think that childcare has a lot to do with also building our workforce. And if we were to use some of these schools, not all, but some of these schools as early education childhood centers for children, one to three, before they're able to get into your VPK programs, this would be really beneficial. It'd be beneficial for families. It would be beneficial for the economy. And it would be beneficial for frankly, being able to reutilize these schools if we find that we need them for, to go back to schools that they once were. And that being said, you know, autism is one of the fastest-growing childhood disabilities in the United States right now. So a couple of years ago, it was one in 44 children. Now it's one in 36 children. And that's just like in a two-year gap. So think of how many children at this rate of escalation, what Broward County is going to look like in 10 years if this continues to escalate at this trend. And let me tell you, we're behind in Broward County with how we're dealing and helping and creating resources and helping families be able to navigate the resources for autistic and disabled children. And I would love to see an autism center for children, not just early education, meaning one to three, once they've been diagnosed, but all the way up the spectrum. Because there's children, there's autism is a, is a very interesting disability because there's a saying, once you've met one autistic child, you've only met one autistic child. Because children, autistic children on the spectrum are very different and their needs are very different across the board. And we really need experts to come in and be able to educate our autistic children and make sure that they're safe in facilities that have lockdown capabilities. And so I think turning at least one of those schools into an autism center would be super beneficial and very forward-thinking for Broward County.
That's, that's good. I keep hearing housing and development. And I wanted to touch a little bit more on housing development. And I want to ask you, should the county be encouraging building and development? Being that so many people move here to Florida and housing, the housing market is through the roof right now. Rental rates are through the roof right now. People are, you know, you know, just, you know, putting tool sheds in their backyard and, and RVs in their backyards and renting those out to, for extra income. So what are your thoughts on encouraging more building and development?
I think we absolutely need more building and development everywhere. And, you know, something I often hear is there's nowhere to build out. Broward County is built up, right? You hear that a lot from a lot of politicians. Broward County is built up. Well, coming from San Francisco and living in Los Angeles and living on the West Coast, you look around and you look up and you see lots of buildings. But let me tell you, when I drive around Broward County, there's not a lot when you're looking up. There's a lot of sky. And so while we may be built up, we're not built out. We're not built up yet. And I really think we need to be encouraging building upwards and building up in city center areas where you have transit, where you have grocery stores, where you have food and restaurants. So creating little mini housing within cities, right? So that you can have a lot of accessibility.
That's a good idea.
Build, build, build. Absolutely. I think that's the answer.
And, and I wanted to just piggyback off that question there too about going up. Because here in Deerfield Beach, I know, if you want to cause a division here, talk about building up.
Especially on the beach.
Especially towards the beach. And I believe even now, you know, in the, in the, in the central part of the city too, I think a lot of people were not in favor of that, those projects in the past. What would you say to your constituents about, as you were saying about going up? What if they were totally against a good majority? I'm not totally, but if, if it was like a 50-50 split, how would you handle a situation? If a project came about and they wanted to go up and it was pretty much 50-50, how would you?
I would say, listen, we are in this problem of housing because we did not create proactive policy to benefit future generations in Broward County. And so I would say, think about your children. Think about your grandchildren. Where are they going to live if they stay here in Broward? Is there going to be a place for them to stay close to you? Or are they going to have to live in your house with you? Because there's not a lot of places that people can go in Broward County if our population keeps expanding the way it is. And listen, people don't want to build up. People don't want affordable housing in their backyards. It's called NIMBY, right? Not in my backyard. But the reality is, is there's no other place to do it. And so sometimes you've got to make a sacrifice for the rest of the community and the, and the health of your community. And that really is densifying Broward County.
Yes.
It's a tough, it's a tough cookie to swallow. And I know a lot of people have a lot of feelings about not wanting to densify in their communities. But you have to think towards the future, the only answer.
You definitely do because just, let's just say you have this really nice home here and you, you got this nice view of, you know, a mile out, this, you know, you can see the, the beach. And then all of a sudden, they come out and they put a big building up and they're blocking your view. And those are the people that you're going to have to convince, you know, that, 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 you know, you're taking away a good view and maybe devaluing their, their property.
And they can't see the fireworks on the Fourth of July.
Fireworks. So there's going to be a tough time to convince them to, you know, go up. But that, there's, there's the property here in South Florida, Broward County, you know, the tri-county area, it's scarce. So you're going to have to start going up. And that's, that's just the way that this, this, this country is going, South Florida, the geographical area that we live in. That's, that's just where we're going. So I think that's going to be a big, big subject to talk about here in the coming up years. And certainly, the County Commission is going to have to answer those tough questions.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And, and Kimberly, what do you consider the biggest challenge of the county seat you are running for? And what area would need the most improvements and why, in your opinion?
So the biggest challenge, as far as, my biggest challenge is running against an incumbent, a very powerful, deep-pocketed incumbent. That's my biggest challenge in running. I would say the biggest challenges in my district is probably the refusal to densify, I would say. And, and really getting through to people how essential it is to build up and build out in Broward County. You know, you, you drive around the neighborhoods in, in my district and you see six, seven, eight, nine cars in driveways. And that's because it's multi-generational housing happening. And it's multi-generational housing happening for a multitude of reasons. But a lot of it is because young people can't find affordable housing. And so they're staying with their parents a lot longer. I think that there's also something to be said about building on to the homes that already exist and creating more housing, more ADUs, more multi-generational housing ability. You know, our communities in Florida are getting older and they're going to need support from their children and their families. And the best way to do that, to guarantee autonomy, dignity for our, for our aging family members is by creating multi-generational housing ability within our existing homes.
Okay. And, and how do you feel our roles in Broward County? What do you feel like the condition of our roles are? Okay. And, and how do you feel our roles in Broward County? What do you feel like the condition of our roles are?
I think that, you know, as of now, roads are okay. Coming from California, I definitely, we had a lot of potholes. Um, that being said, we definitely need to keep on top of it. I think that there's something to be said about transit. Um, one thing that I don't see is a lot of accessible transit that people are actually using. And I think that that's another conversation, um, that kind of is in tune with densifying and is in tune with creating, um, housing centers that are encompassed around shopping centers and food centers. Um, I would love to see more public transportation that is utilized. Um, and I would love to see more densification, which is going to create the need for more public transportation that is utilized.
Yes. And you, and you were talking about public transportation. That was something that I think me and my brother discussed maybe this morning. We were talking about, uh, public transportation here. What further forms of public transportation, be coming from California? And I've been out to California, uh, what other forms of transportation would you like to see, uh, Broward County utilize here?
I would love to see more use of metro rail, of trains, of commuter trains. You know, you, you look at the major cities of the world. Look at London, right? Look at different cities in Europe. Look at Chicago. Look at San Francisco. Look at New York. There's a lot of accessibility in trains. Um, but for some reason, when you look, when you take a look out, not to Fort Lauderdale, but outwards, there's not a train system that connects us all. And unfortunately, um, it wasn't planned for, and the space wasn't planned for 50 years ago, when it should have been in order to be able to build up and around these transit centers. We're just playing catch up now and trying to make that happen.
Yes. And I want to speak also on, uh, let's just say, God forbid, we came into a financial, uh, bad days, crisis like we did here around 2008, 2010, or even during COVID. And, uh, the county was forced to make changes as far as cuts, uh, at positions and layoffs. How do you feel about that? About layoffs on, at the county level? If that was to ever have to come in fruition?
I think layoffs are always a really sad thing. I mean, people are losing their livelihood. People are losing their jobs. People are struggling to pay their rent or their mortgage or their insurance or their health insurance. Having to pay that out of pocket is really tough. And so I think we should avoid layoffs, right? At all costs. And also with the understanding that sometimes just for the viability of a business, you have to lay people off. I've been laid off before. It was terrible during COVID. And, you know, I got back up on my feet and figured it out. But I know how it feels to be laid off, which is why I would do everything within my power to keep any municipal worker from being laid off.
Right. Would you be in favor of furlough days as a way of preventing layoffs?
You know, I think that there's a conversation that could be had about furlough days. Uh, my sister, she worked for the federal government and definitely had some furlough days. Um, I think that there's a conversation that needs to happen about medical insurance, um, with those furlough days and what it looks like. Um, I would have to do some more investigation to be able to give a, a really clear response on my stance on furlough days.
Right. And my final question for you would be, um, is to tell the viewers, uh, what is your experience with preparing a budget? Since you'll be working with, uh, large amounts of money down at the county and, and working with budgets and with the, with the county managers and everything, uh, what are, what are, what are your experience, uh, uh, with budgets?
Yeah. So previously to being a municipal worker here in Broward County, um, I like to say in my other life, uh, I was a senior executive for multinational cosmetics companies. I oversaw the largest territory in North America, um, including Canada, Hawaii and the West Coast for multinational cosmetic brands, working in partnership with their buying offices and their sales teams. So I definitely have experience in budgeting and also in my current role, I do manage the budget too.
Okay. So you do have some experience in, in, in budgets. Okay. So you'll definitely, definitely be working with uh, huge budgets here down at the county. So, uh, yeah, so you do that. Having some experience in, or working with budgets is, is also a plus. Yes.
And let me add, let me add one thing. Uh, I was a single mom for, for quite a few years. And you will not know anybody that knows how to manage a budget better than a single mother that needs to provide for their child and also pay all their bills and get done what they need to get done.
Right.
So not only do I have the professional experience, but I have the personal experience of what it means to balance a budget really tightly and understand how essential every single dollar is. So I think that that's a, uh, added bonus, having somebody that has that experience.
Good, 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 good question. Good answer, I should say. That's all I have. Do you have anything else for?
Yeah. What has been your greatest accomplishment in your career and in your personal life?
Well, I would say my, in my personal life, my, which, which may also turn into my career, right? Is, is running for office is my greatest accomplishment so far. And I would say, you know, it takes a lot of courage to run for office. Takes a whole mountain of courage to run for office because you are passionate about something and you want to make something happen and you see issues that you know you want to be a part of solving, right? And so you run. And my, my mother and my sister both died of breast cancer, um, within six months.
To hear that.
Thank you. Thank you. Within six months of each other. Um, this was just under two years ago. And something they both told me as they were passing away, as I held their hands in bed was, don't be scared to do something. Don't wait. If you want to accomplish something and you want to make a difference and you want to do something that you've always wanted to do, don't let fear stop you. Don't wait for your kids to be older. Don't wait till you have more money. Don't wait for you to be skinnier. Don't wait for you to know more. If you want to do something and accomplish something, do it now. Because there is no reason to let your fear or second guessing yourself stop you from accomplishing something that you know you would be good at or you know you would be impactful. So one of my biggest accomplishments is following through and listening to what my mother and my sister both told me as they were dying and make that step into making the choice to run for office, to improve people's lives and to impact people's lives in my community and make it a better community and be the voice for those that don't have representation in local government.
That's good. Be a voice for the voiceless.
Yes.
Uh, anything else?
Just one other question and then I'll let, we'll let you give your final thoughts, which you did a good job just now, uh, uh, during it. But how do you feel about gentrification?
You know, I was born and raised in Oakland. Uh, I was born in, right outside of Lake Merritt. And gentrification has been a huge word that's been used in, uh, San Francisco Bay area. And I understand the concerns and I understand not wanting to create an environment where people are pushed out of their communities. And it's a real problem that's happening. And people are having to leave their communities because they can't afford to live there anymore. Right? And I think gentrification is a concern in a lot of urban communities. And we don't want to see people pushed out of their homes that they've been in for generations because we are introducing, you know, new businesses or, um, additional things that are happening that are pushing up their taxes and having to make them leave. I think that gentrification is a very real issue, um, that does need to be tackled.
Yeah, a lot of people feel that way, especially some people here up here in Deerfield. They believe that, you know, they're being, you know, the, the area that we used to live in was this big. And now, uh, they're moving the, the lines back where, you know, the, uh, commercial areas can build and the residential areas are shrinking. So they're essentially squeezing you out slowly, but surely. And, uh, a lot of people, uh, don't take very kindly to that. But, uh, it's what's happening around here in, in the South Florida area.
And also, uh, Kimberly, what would you do if elected to entice more businesses to come to Broward County? Major businesses like, maybe like something like an Apple or corporations like that.
I love that you said that. So tech, tech really is where we need to go in Broward County. We really need to start, um, courting these tech companies and welcome them into Broward County to build business, to build, um, high wage jobs here in the community. Um, and there's a lot of jobs, not just high wage jobs that happen when you bring in an Apple or there's Amazon here already, but these big, big technology companies. So what I would do, I think I would definitely court them. I would advocate for them. I would talk to community about how it's gonna benefit them and why they should also get on board with having bigger business in their communities, right? Because ultimately, it's about what the people want. And it's about making the people understand how it's gonna benefit them. Cause that's what it's all about, right? How is government gonna help you? How is government gonna help the communities that they are representing?
Okay. We've been talking to Kimberly Jean and she is, uh, a candidate for Broward County Commission, uh, District, uh, five, and she is going to be on, uh, on, on, on the ballot here. Hopefully you're coming up here real soon. So, uh, here's your chance, Kimberly, uh, to sell yourself to the voters here, here of Broward County. Tell the voters here of Broward County why they should elect you as the next, uh, uh, District Five Broward County Commissioner in three minutes.
In three minutes. All right. So the voters of Broward County should elect me because we cannot keep electing the same kind of people that have been in politics for decades and decades and decades and expect change to happen. We have career politicians, multimillionaires and seniors representing our community at a county level. And in local government, we need people that truly understand what it means to be middle income, to be low income, to be touched by disability, to be touched by, um, being a municipal worker, to work with the unhoused on a regular basis. Uh, to have children in Broward County Public Schools currently, to have somebody that works with law enforcement regularly. Um, there comes a time when you look around at who's gonna represent you and who you're gonna elect to be the person that makes the big decisions for how you are affected. And when you elect that person, you want them to understand what it's like to be you. And I don't feel like we have that currently on the Broward County Commission, at least not in my district. And so I'm running for office to be representative for young people, for students, fixed income people, for children that are touched by autism, for families that are touched by disability, for multi-generational ho- homes, for immigrants, uh, that immigrated here. My husband came here from Columbia when he was eight years old. Um, I really want to be a part of solving a lot of these problems that can only be fixed at a county level. I can only be one of nine. But what I can do is advocate loudly and passionately for the people that I represent and for the county that I really love and work within every single day.
Okay. Uh, look for her name on the ballot, uh, coming up, uh, here real soon. Uh, Kimberly Jean, uh, candidate for, uh, Broward County Commissioner, uh, District Five. We want to thank you, uh, so very much for coming on the Addams Brothers Podcast and, uh, reaching out to the viewers, our viewers and, and, and telling them why you want to be, uh, the next, uh, Broward County Commissioner down in District Five down there. So, uh, thank you very much.
And if elected, Kimberly, don't be a stranger. Come back on here.
Come back on here.
I won't be a stranger. And I'd just like to say, if anyone would like to learn about me more or get involved with my campaign, volunteer, donate. This is a grassroots, uh, operation here. And I need volunteers. I need supporters and funding, frankly. So go to www.kimberlyjeancommissioner.com and you can get involved in the movement of making Broward County brighter for the future.
All right. Kimberly Jean, thank you so very much for tuning, uh, stopping by and talking to the Addams Brothers Podcast. Thank you. And good luck to you and, uh, in your quest to be the next, uh, Broward County Commissioner in District Five.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
You have a good evening.
Have a good evening and happy Valentine's Day to you.
Yes.